Good morning. Welcome to the May 6, 2015 meeting of the Pontegorroda City Council. Please let the record reflect that all council members and city officials are present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge thee as Creator and sustainer of all life. In our future, the second ever, let us not take the sacred. Blessed are we in this meeting and the members to thy continued service. Amen.
The United States of America, into the Republic where which stands, in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. During today's session, there will be taking breaks for our videographer to change the tapes, so we'll have those probably about 10:15, 11:30, etc. We have several proclamations and presentations this morning. But before we begin, I would like for us all to reflect on the unrest that has been occurring in cities across our country and acknowledge all that we have to be thankful for in our own community. Our Pontegorroda Police Department and our Charlotte County Sheriff's Office have been working together with community and religious leaders to ensure continued communication with one another and with our young people. Our residents here in Pontegorroda in Charlotte County have been leaders in ensuring integration of our schools and our businesses well before the rest of the country. We should be so proud of our heritage. We should be so proud of and embrace our differences, whether it was with our neighbor next door, our neighbor down the street, or our neighbor across town. We should be so proud of our residents, our clergy, our churches, our police, for recognizing that we must not take our lack of stride for granted, but continue the progress that has been made. We must continue to join together in conversation, maintaining open and honest communication. We want to further the cause of peace, justice, and community unity. The April 25 NAACP March for Peace, Justice, and Community Unity was a wonderful celebration of Pontegorroda's unique role in creating an environment that advances peace and harmony among us all. Many thanks are due to Pastor Louis Anderson and all who helped organize the March Across Our Very Own Peace River. I will now repeat the first proclamation. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda. Whereas prayer is regarded by millions as the most important utterance of mankind for its benefit, and whereas prayer has aided us in all times where support and guidance were needed, and whereas it is fitting that we should give thanks for the freedom and prosperity which our nation and state enjoys, and to pray for the continued guidance and comfort which God has graciously bestowed upon this nation since its inception, and whereas the National Day of Prayer is a time to set aside for Americans to pray and reaffirm their spiritual principles upon which our nation was founded, and whereas the City of Pontegorroda, the State of Florida, and the United States of America can and will benefit from prayer by its faithful and prayerful residents, and whereas this year's theme, "Lord, Hear Our Cry," from 1 Kings 8:28, which tells us, "Hear the cry and prayer that your servant is praying in your presence this day." And whereas across our land on May 7, Americans will unite at specific times in prayer for our nation, state, and city, to acknowledge our dependence upon God, to give thanks for the many blessings our country has received from him, to recognize our need for personal and corporate renewal of moral values, and to invoke God's blessings upon our leaders. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda does hereby proclaim May 7, 2015, National Day of Prayer throughout the city, and invites all residents to observe this day in ways that are appropriate to its importance and significance. Past and duly adopted in regular session, the 6th Day of May, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Florida, Carolyn Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is Assistant Pastor Bob Carlson from the First United Methodist Church.
Thank you, Mayor Freeland, for this proclamation and for your support of the National Day of Prayer. Since the days of the pilgrims, through colonial America, all of American history, governments, presidents, many leaders have proclaimed the National Day of Prayer. Many times it was at a time of great crisis. Now, since 1952, it's been every year, and it's truly wonderful that our president has proclaimed it the National Day of Prayer, as well as local leaders such as yourself. This theme is "Lord, Hear Our Cry," certainly is relevant when we look at the news. We need help, don't we? I don't think anybody can deny that. There are those who would look at this as merely a demonstration of solidarity among those who pray, but it's more than that. We need to pray. We need to genuinely, from our hearts, pray for God's help in these days. And we invite all of you to join us here in Pontegorroda, in front of the City Hall Annex tomorrow at noon, for about a half hour service, and there will be various people in the community who will be there to lead us in that service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Nancy Crafty.
It's an honor to do this, and especially anything to do with our history of our community. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas the City of Pontegorroda has proclaimed itself to be hibiscus city since 1926, when plantings were provided throughout the city, and whereas the city adopted Resolution 2177-00 on March 1, 2000, reaffirming that designation and declaring itself to be the City of Hibiscus. And whereas Harry Goulding made Pontegorroda his home and devoted his talents to growing and producing hybrid hibiscus plants throughout his life, earning many awards such as the National American Hibiscus Society's Norman Rubaker Trophy, or the judge's favorite bloom of 1987 with Harvest Moon, which he hybridized. And whereas, to continue efforts to highlight the city's designation, Hibiscus Festival will be held in Gilchrist Park on May 15, 16, and 17, 2015, to include an evening of picnics and music in the park, a two-day flower sale, Little Miss and Master Hibiscus pageant, Pontegorroda Hibiscus Cup Regatta, antique cars, trolley rides, kids games, entertainment by local bands, and landscaping items for sale. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim May 16, 2015, as Hibiscus Day throughout the City of Pontegorroda, and encourages all residents to plant hibiscus to bearded by the city and continue the tradition which began many years ago. Past and duly adopted in regular session, the 6th Day of May, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Carolyn and Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is Diane and Stan Musson.
Thank you very much for this honor, and I would like you all to come out and pray on this day in our beautiful Gilchrist Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tom Cavanagh will read our next proclamation.
This is our proclamation against the United States Public Affairs Auxiliary, the Peace River Sale and Power Squadron that joins with the Pontegorroda Voteers Alliance in promoting education about safe voting for all our citizens, and where it is a fact that 75% of all persons that go overboard drown, and that 87% of those were reported to have been able to swim, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not due to vote equipment or environmental factors, and whereas it is a fact that 100% of drowning fatalities were not wearing a life jacket, and whereas most of those voters who lost their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn a life jacket, and whereas modern life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's voting public. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda does hereby proclaim the week of May 16 to the 22nd, 2015, as National Safe Voting Week, and urges those who vote, if you're vote smart, vote safe, and wear a life jacket, and to practice safe voting habits at all times, passed until we adopt in a regular session, the 6th Day of May, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Carolyn and Freeland, Mayor, and accepting a proclamation is Virginia Bryan from the Public Affairs, U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, and also Gene Anderson from the Peace River Sale and Power Squadron.
The advantages of being short. I want to thank City Council for this proclamation for National Safe Voting Week. Peace River Sale and Power Squadron are one of 400, over 400 units in the United States Power Squadron. We work very hard at educating voters in our area on how they can vote safely. We teach classes from beginning voting, hurricane preparedness for your votes, to navigating by the stars, and we teach them many times a year. Thank you again for this proclamation, and you can find us on Facebook.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, on behalf of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary and your own Hometown Flotilla 98, Hibiscus City Hometown Flotilla, that is, I am proud to accept this proclamation for the National Safe Voting Week. I want you to know that on the 16th and the 17th, we're going to be very busy conducting free, best safety checks simultaneously at three ramps, beginning at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday to the 16th, that would be at Lashley, at Charlotte Beach Complex, and then again at Ponce de Leon Park. On the 17th, we're partnering with the YMCA over on the Casado Boulevard, where they're having their National Safe Water Day, and we're going to have Sammy the Sea Otter make an appearance, so bring the kids. It starts around 9:00 a.m. Listen, thank you again so very much. We appreciate this, and we hope to see all of y'all, and thank you too, Power Squadron, because you are one of our partners in this, in state voting. Don't forget to wear it. Thank you, now.
Our next proclamation will be read by former mayor and councilmember Richard Peaslee.
Thank you, my pleasure. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, parks and canal maintenance, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. And whereas this year's theme, "Community," begins here, as we celebrate the hard work and dedication of the many public works professionals throughout the world. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of May 17 to May 23, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the City of Pontegorroda, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and our quality of life. Past and duly adopted in regular session, the 6th Day of May, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Carolyn and Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is our one and only public works professional of 35 years, Rick Peet.
Thank you so much for recognizing public works, the men and women who do so much for the community, and I just wanted to come up with me because all our public works, personnel, our team, and we love our community, and just thank you so much.
On behalf of all of our staff at Public Works, I'm happy to accept the proclamation for all of us, and to say that they are all so very proud to represent the City of Pontegorroda. Thank you.
Now, our last proclamation is going to be read by Vice Mayor Jim Devine.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas understanding the effects of vision loss is essential, and whereas obtaining knowledge about current laws, rights, skills, and ability of persons with blindness or visual loss will enable this population to have equal access to services, businesses, and activities benefiting them and the entire community. And whereas, as the public learns more about the American with Disabilities Act, greater opportunities will become available to persons who are blind or visually impaired, and whereas all residents are encouraged to seek out information about the abilities of persons who are blind or visually impaired in order to discover the most effective ways to provide assistance and increase their knowledge about the rights and laws that help this population become fully integrated into all aspects of society. And whereas the National Institute of Health has declared May 2015 as Healthy Vision Month. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Pontegorroda does hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Visually Impaired Persons Awareness Month, and encourages all residents to utilize this time to learn about the visually impaired and extend their best wishes to all who are observing the same. Past and duly adopted in regular session, the 6th Day of May, 2015, City of Pontegorroda, Florida, Carolyn and Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is Sharon Murns.
Thank you very much for this honor. I would like to invite everyone out to the Visually Impaired Persons of Charlotte County Center, which is at 3459 DePue Avenue in Port Charlotte. Next Wednesday, from 5 to 7, we are having a proclamation event, and we will be having a lime and cheese reception immediately following. So 5 to 7, we're all invited, and we are also on Facebook.
We now present the board, and I understand Chief Ray Grace will be the segment.
My name is Michael Hirsch. This is my wife Karen. I've been resident of Pontegorroda since 2002, first in BGI and then in Seminole Lakes. I want to thank Howard Munich, the city manager, and the city council for giving us the opportunity to publicly thank the people lining that wall. They're responsible for the fact that Karen is still alive. Let me tell you what happened. At about 4:30 in the afternoon on February 11, I was home in Seminole Lakes, waiting for Karen to get back from the dentist. The doorbell rang, and there was a state trooper standing there, and he said, "Mr. Hirsch, your wife's been in a very bad car crash." And at that point, everything stops, and the only thing I could think of is, what's the next sentence? That's actually the first time I've seen that, almost life-size. And the next sentence was, "She's been taken to Lee Memorial. You know where that is?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Go." So guess what happened? She was coming back from the dentist. She was in front of where Sweet Bay used to be, and what I'm about to say, we didn't know until four or five days later when they took the tube out of her, and she could speak. But a car probably turning off of A-line, going westbound on A-line, turning southbound onto 41, hit the back of her car on the left side, forcing her car off the road down the hill, and that was the result. This happened on February 11, and the tire marks are still there on 41. It didn't take long for a lot of people to stop and see what was going on. A lot of people called 911. One person actually drove to the fire station on A-line Road, Station 2, and got there just as the guys were almost pulling out. But it's one thing to call 911 and say, "I just saw something." It's another to really try and do something. And here today are two people who did something. Kim Honore, would you like her? Of course, Kim works at Animal Lab, and long ago used to groom our lake therapy dog, Alfie. She ran out to see what was going on and jumped in the water. And then another person came by and also did the same thing. Rich Chees, who's hiding back there with his son. He's a fourth grade teacher at Sally Jones, and he too jumped in the water. Karen remembers going down the hill. She remembers the car rolling. She remembers hanging from the seatbelt and trying to uncook it, but it's going in and out of water. We had rain a couple days before, and there was probably a foot and a half of water in the ditch. Can you go to the next flight, please, with her? That's what she was in. So they actually had to get in the car and get her out. Her leg was doubled over, that car on the steering wheel. They got her out and on the slope. I don't use the hero word very often, but it's appropriate here. About that time, the fire truck from Station 2 arrived, and the chief is going to be introducing all of us people in a moment, but they immediately looked at the situation and called for the helicopter, which was the next step in this chain that saves her life. They began working hard on her on the slope. About a minute later, the ambulance from the fire station, the county fire station on Notre Dame, arrived. They got her in the ambulance. The helicopter landed 13 minutes after it was called. That was the biggest bit of luck in that respect, and then it was on the ground at Pontegorroda Airport. They worked on her. People who were there said it felt like a half hour. I've talked with the crew this morning, and by the way, this is the first time that all but Kim have ever seen Karen standing up. It was a treat for them, so a big treat for me. Anyhow, they worked on her in the helicopter for probably 12 or 13 minutes, and then flew to Lee Memorial. I got to Lee Memorial, and they took me into the trauma center. The doctor told me they had already done a complete CAT scan of her body, and amazingly she had no internal injuries, no broken bones. They were treating her as a near drowning victim, and that was the problem. She was in the hospital for 17 days, came out, and then went, we went to the pulmonologist four days later, and he said, "Your x-ray is terrible. You need to go in." At that point, Lee Memorial was overcrowded. We had to go in through the ER. The ER in Lee Memorial has 20 beds. They had 70 registered patients. Patients were on gurneys, on chairs, sitting on the floor in the ER always. I'm not talking about the waiting room. I'm talking about people who've been triaged and need to be in the hospital. About six hours later, she was up in the ICU again, and then five days later, she got out on oxygen, and not too long ago, she got off of oxygen. We asked the chief if he would bring the people responsible for the fact that Karen's still alive to this meeting, because we need to publicly help them.
Thank you, Michael. It's my absolute honor and pleasure to be part of this today, and I thank Michael and Karen for putting it together. In our industry, we talk about the chain of survival, and as with any chain, it's dependent upon each link. And what we see today are, these are all valuable or vital links in the chain of survival. If one of those links is missing or broken, it just doesn't work. So we're here to honor all of these folks today. I thank Chief Taylor from Charlotte County and Jennifer from Arimed for bringing their crew here with them. I'm going to call some names, and we're going to give some plaques, and this isn't the order that folks arrived on scene. So first and foremost, Kim Honore and Rich Chees, if you would be. Secondly, arriving was the City of Pontegorroda Engine 2 Crew Fire Medic Tommy Laurenti and Lieutenant Rob Logan, arrive next. We have the 90th Rob Leonardowski, who arrived on the scene next. Then representing Charlotte County Fire and EMS, we have Fire Medic Eddie Diaz, if he'll come forward, and Fire EMT Ryan Gager. Then arriving, as Michael said, a vital part of this chain, Flight Nurse Chad Hughes, Flight Medic Noah O'Connell, and unable to join us today, certainly a vital piece of it, is Pilot Kevin Kenney. With that, again, once again, I'd like to say, we very often, or in often, do we get the opportunity to see the end result, the fruit of the effort, and that's what we see today, and I just personally want to thank each and every one of you for what you did, not only that day, but every day. You folks were having the courage to make a difference.
Thank you. For months, I've been thinking, what can I do? Do I take them out to dinner? What do I do? I have no idea.
That's the next step.
So we decided to honor them here, and the only thing I can say to everybody is, thank you. Thank you for my life, and without you guys, I wouldn't be here today. So, and any of my friends who supported me while I was in the hospital, if you're here today, thank you. You helped me also so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Such a wonderful, wonderful team, as you can see.
One last thing.
One last thing.
One last thing. I actually have something for the chief. This has taken about two months after the accident, and I have something for the chief that says, "But thanks to the men and women of the Pontegorroda Fire Department and Charlotte County EMS, without whom this picture would not have been possible, from the family of Karen Hirsch, whose life you saved on February 11, 2015, when she was the victim of a hit-and-run driver." One thing about that picture... One thing about that picture, what you see is, you know, some elderly grandparents with four grandkids. What I see is our tax dollars at work. I need to thank the elected officials of Punta Gorda and the city staff for vigorously supporting the kind of organization of first responders that we have in this city. Thank you.
For many of you who do not normally attend a council meeting, we often have proclamations, we often have recognition of individuals, but I think this is the first time where we have had all of the individuals who are responsible for one incident, and you can see the number of people that it takes to get to save a life. Thank you. Our next presentation is going to be done by Becky Alfonso, the Executive Director for the Florida Bicycle Association.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The Florida Bicycle Association annually recognizes people, agencies, and organizations from around the state for their contributions to build a bicycle-friendly Florida. Bicycle-friendly sounds easy enough, but there is a criteria that the League of American Bicycleists use to gauge that friendliness. It's known as the five Es: education, enforcement, evaluation, engineering, and encouragement. Corrie Midrival has been involved in this community as a cyclist, but also has touched upon those five Es to make Punta Gorda a bicycle-friendly community. He has worked on the MPO Bicycle Advisory Committee. He works closely with the Chief of Police with regards to enforcement, not only for motorists, but for bicyclists as well. He is currently serving on the Team Punta Gorda Committee, which is looking to receive a designation from the League of American Cyclists with regards to being a bicycle-friendly community. One E that doesn't get talked about is called economics. Corrie started a Wings and Wheels Ride six years ago, bringing other cyclists into this community. I don't know if anybody here rides a bike maybe five miles, 10, 30. You get hungry. If you're coming from out of town, you may need a place to stay. These are the types of economic dollars that cycling can bring into a community. And when you have a national recognition from the League of American Cyclists, you have cyclists from across the nation and internationally looking for places to ride their bike. It's an honor to present to Corrie Midrival the Citizen Advocate of the Year Award from the Florida Bicycle Association.
This is an interesting and bittersweet award. The sweet part, of course, being recognized statewide was something I'd love to do anyway. The bitter part is, is that I'm being awarded for something that should be natural for everybody. You should be able to go out and ride a bike wherever you want, winter, but we'll get there someday. So, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have a presentation from the Punta Gorda area pickleball players, and Sue Carmen.
Good morning. My name is Dave Killensworth, and along with me today is Dave Fox and Sue Carmen, and we represent a group of several hundred pickleball players from the Punta Gorda area that wish to extend our thanks and gratitude to City Manager Howard Kunitz and also the City Council for the recent renovations at Gilchrist Park, which have given us eight first-class pickleball courts. Those courts actually were just completed yesterday, so that was great. I'd like for Sue Carmen would like to present to you an official pickleball, and that represents an invitation to all of you to join us for what NBC Sports has recently recommended is the fastest-growing sport in America. In addition, the three of us represent a select group of pickleball players that feel so strongly about this that we wanted to express further gratitude to the City of Punta Gorda for what they've done, and so Dave Fox will be presenting a check to Mayor Freeland in the amount of $2,907. Last but not least, we do want to recognize and thank the so many city employees that worked on this, and particularly City Engineer Mark Geary, who worked alongside of us to bring us to this end that turned out so well. So, thank you so much from the entire pickleball community.
Thank you. And now we have a very special recognition and presentation. Hope Petkus, who is our Public Works Executive Assistant, is going to recognize our graduates from the Punta Gorda Citizens Academy, and if you would all come up, we'd like to see you personally.
Good morning, City Council, Mayor Freeland. It's my pleasure to introduce the Citizens Academy participants for 2015. It was a very large class this year. We had 36 participants. All of them are not here today, some of them are snowbirds and have left and gone back home, or to their second home, we like to say. So here they are, our wonderful Citizens Academy 2015. Just wanted to say that they were a remarkable group, and I know that they all thought that the City of Punta Gorda, and they do think that the City of Punta Gorda is the greatest place to live, and many, many remarks, which I will be sharing later on, of how many of them thought that so many of the different classes that they participated in were just dynamite. And I know that there are so many of you other residents out there that don't know a lot about the City of Punta Gorda and how the City Council and the Mayor and the City Manager, Howard Kunitz, runs this city, and I would appreciate if you start ringing my phone, and we'll get the next class for 2016 started. Thank you so very much for all participating. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It would be a mistake to let Hope leave this mic without being thanked for her work in making this Citizens Academy work. We are very thankful of the City, the City Manager, the Mayor, the City Council, and all of the departmental people that we met, but there were hundreds of them. And we now know a number of things about this city that we didn't know before. If you haven't been to the Citizens Academy, then let me tell you a couple of things that you might want to know, that you'll only find out if you go. Why is it that the City of Punta Gorda only has one registered sex offender? Why is it that the wastewater treatment plant is four miles outside the city limits? Why is it that 35 people came to this meeting over a period of months and almost always left with a big smile on their face because they learned something that they could go home and tell their spouse, or their kids, or their grandkids about why this is such a wonderful community? Thank you again, all of you, for providing this opportunity for the citizens, and anyone who is here that hasn't been to the Citizens Academy, I urge you very strongly to attend.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll ask anyone who is running for a city board or committee who wishes to introduce themselves to come forward and do so. Anyone wishing to have form? All right, then we will adjourn the City Council and reconvene as the CRA, our Community We will first have citizens' comments on CRA agenda items only. That includes the minutes, our CRA project status report, our lease agreement with the Punta Gorda Downtown Merchants Association, or the Artisans Atelier, our funding for the continuation of a health educator for the Traboo Woods community, and also request for additional funding for our hand railing to complete our Lashley Park Marina building renovation. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to any of these issues? All right, we now have the Howard Kunitz Show. We need a microphone on?
Howard Kunitz, CRA Director. We never get this kind of an audience for a CRA monthly report. That means it's going to go on for a while. No. Our marina is still doing quite well. You can see all the permanent slips and moorings. We now have six boats in the mooring field, which is more than we've ever had before. Our community room still is getting well-used, and we now have, we're down to 16 people staying on their boats in the marina. So the marina's doing really well. Our pump-out vessel gives you an idea of the activity for the month of April. Remember, we serve not only the city, but whole Charlotte, most of Charlotte, hardly. We've done some improvements to our Lashley Park area. The marina building painting is completed. We still have a minor leak that we think now we're going to try and resolve with some of the changing of some of the floor drains outside the marina building, make the water flow out towards the, out towards the water instead of flowing back to the building. We think that might solve the last minor leak. The landscaping, we're still monitoring some of the palm trees and some of the other trees that have been planted. Some of them look okay, some of them don't, and the permanent railing is going to be on later on in today's agenda. The ADA improvements to the Gilchrist Park fishing pier is complete, so that's up and running.
At the next council meeting, we will be discussing...